11th Lebanon City Council meeting.
United States of America and the very well with which it stands. The liberty, justice, for all.
Morris Jones.
We have motion to approve, there are second. Okay, since we have a full house tonight. It's Child Abuse Prevention Month. Declaring April 2022 as. And I'll have Cassie Fraser from Sylvie to ensure. By whole communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs. Social service agencies, schools. Child abuse and its prevention within the community and should become involved in supporting parents. Through the Department of Child Services continues to facilitate progress towards realizing the goal of protecting. High quality, uniform treatment services for these children and their families. And whereas Lebanon City and Indiana, a call upon citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities and businesses to increase the participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live and further direct that this proclamation become part of the official city records. Have a proclamation here, I'll present to Cassie, so if you want to step forward and say a few words.
Okay, thank you very much for having us today. I wanted to give you kind of an update on where we are. So 10 years ago, Boone County, Lebanon and all of the surrounding get to create Sylvia's Child Advocacy Center. In the 10 years, we have become a five hundred and one C, three independent operating nonprofit. We have assisted in the investigation of the biggest. Indiana accredited by that body. I just wanted to do kind of an update on where we were.
Make it on a department like Lebanon Fire Department. And as Chief Bads mentioned, been here for two weeks already. Already learned a tremendous amount and just looking forward to continuing to learn every day for the next.
Next, I have the privilege to introduce Sam Doherty. Sam has been a member of our department for five years and I can't say enough about servant's heart. And he wanted to serve, he lives and greets it.
I just wanted to, I wrote a few things down. First off, I'm very proud to be a member of this fire department. City of Lebanon and this community five years ago. Caitlin, my kids, Lincoln and all group class, they helped me a tremendous amount. Everyone from Asia for my first five years who helped me. And then my three go-tos for advice whenever I needed it. Battalion Chief Joe Caldwell, Captain Rodney Prinsell and Lieutenant Noah Rinker. Thank you.
Matt Young is a legacy firefighter for the city of Lebanon. His grandfather, he is always someone that we can turn to to get the job done. So it's my honor to interview Matt Young.
I state to you the constitution of the state of Indiana.
The constitution of the state of Indiana.
And all laws and ordinances of the city of Lebanon.
All laws and ordinances of the city of Lebanon.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a captain at the Lebanon Fire Department.
As a captain of the Lebanon Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations, sir.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank my wife and my family for the love and support that they give. I'd also like to thank a few of my mentors in the fire department, a lot of them are here and they know what they're on. Finally, I'd like to thank the department and the city of Lebanon for giving me the opportunity to serve as a part of the leadership of this department. Placing your trust and faith in me.
Yeah, we're going to stand in recess, so if you don't want to stay, we've got some interesting stuff tonight. I was make the pitch, but we will pause for a moment to let you guys exit if you choose not to, so no more feelings.
So all of our groups will get up and go downstairs and we're going to have to be very, very quiet because they're going to continue the council meeting. But we'll go downstairs and be able to take several pictures.
So we're going to stay in recess for about two minutes, sorry. All right, thank you, counsel, apologize for the delay here tonight, certain kind of stuff going on. Okay, so we'll restart our meeting here, move on to old business. First item up will be Resolution 2022-08. Counsel will consider it as a fiscal plan for the Labrie annexation. And Ben's going to present this. Joe, last, last time.
Development changes to the property, so it does not generate the additional revenue, obviously as an undeveloped vacant agricultural piece of property. It also doesn't add any costs to the city, it's not going to cost us anything to provide services. So fiscal plan's fairly straightforward, it does outline. There are no additional revenues, it's a non-additional cost to the city. That's a quick summary of that.
Thank you, Ben, any questions for Ben concerning that? Ben, can you read, or Rob, can you read Resolution 2022-08, please?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Resolution 2022 Exhibits A and B pursuant to Indiana Code, this council is required to adopt a written fiscal plan prior to the passage of annexation ordinance 2022-07. Therefore, the fiscal plan that's attached as Exhibit C has been prepared and presented to this council for consideration. This fiscal plan has been reviewed and complies with the requirements of Indiana Code. And this council hereby approves the fiscal plan and the approved area, or for the area sought to be annexed.
Thank you, Rob. Now the resolution has been read, any discussion, question, comments from counsel?
No, sir.
Any public comment at this time? Okay, would then entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2022-08?
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2022-08.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those who are say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that resolution is adopted unanimously. On a related note, next up will be ordinance 2022-07, council to consider annexation of the Labrie property.
I'm here, I'm just going to be happy to answer your questions if you have any.
Any questions for Ben?
No, sir.
Rob, can you please read the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor, council, ordinance, the 100% of the owners of the parcels that are identified in Exhibits A and B for the annexation area that they filed a voluntary petition with this council. The Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing at its meeting scheduled on March 24th. A public hearing on March Indiana Law. This council just adopted a fiscal plan for the annexation area. The annexation area meets the continuity requirements pursuant to Indiana Code and therefore this council now finds that the annexation area on the east side of 100 East, approximately 2,800 feet north, declared annexed and declared to be a part of the city of Lebanon. The annexation area is further to include the contiguous public highways and rightways of the public highways, which are adjacent to the annexation area. The annexation area is hereby assigned council district two and shall become a part immediately upon the effective date of this ordinance. Again, the annexation area is assigned single-family residential zoning classification and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, its publication and upon the applicable waiting day periods.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance has been written, now read on second reading. Is there any public comment concerning this at this time? Okay, any further discussion, comments from counsel?
No, sir.
Any motion to approve, there are second?
Second.
Second from John. All those who are say aye.
Aye.
That ordinance is adopted unanimously, thank you, counsel. Okay, Resolution 20.
I asked first. I asked him to go back and redo his fiscal. I asked him to prepare it based on the actual sales. We will be in for him. Page six. Are the annual. In a 20. 2025. Well, and a manual rub and that would be. And page. As you can see, a somewhat long history on this property. And I went back through my old files for the Bradford Village development previously on the site. And I found an agreement between Lebanon Utilities and our predecessor, Tyle, the developer of that project, wherein the city of Lebanon Utility Agreement had agreed to basically availability fee credits that they would charge on this project, on this property of about $255,000. That agreement was signed by Mike Martin, Bob Waples and an officer of the previous developer, who actually is the cousin of Dale Smith. This was principally in exchange for the release of the restricted sewer rights to the Chadwick Sewer, which Auburn Meadows now discharges. That developer actually paid the claimant on that real money in exchange for getting that waiver and got that waiver for the benefit of Lebanon. Lebanon has benefited from that waiver that they got by the connections from Angelie Gardens. But in exchange, this property was always supposed to receive utility fee credits of at least $255,000. Attached to this document you will find in your packet are the minutes of the utility service board where this agreement was approved by the utility service board and Mike Martin and Bob Waples were authorized to sign it on behalf of the utility service board. As an interesting note, it actually shows I was present at that meeting, but I don't recall, so I was surprised to see a name on there. But in any event, so what we were asking for is only slightly in excess of utility fee credits that this property was always supposed to have. The, it's not that big of a difference, but the Lebanon Utilities really should never have been counting on $255,000 worth of availability fees on this property. So I've had heard some concerns over the last two weeks about precedent. Let me suggest to you that you should want to take this opportunity to set precedent. You should want to set a precedent for a price point home that Lebanon does not currently serve at any kind of critical mass in this city. We are going to be bringing $400,000 plus homes, 400 of them. Then not only will it develop this area in that location, but they will provide comparable sales to encourage other developers to come in and want to exploit that market segment in this community. Right now, it's a real challenge because there are no comparables at that price pointer, except for maybe one or two a year, but not on any kind of scale that builders need to justify an investment of this size. But in terms of any adverse precedent, it's going to be very hard for any other potential builder to meet the three criteria that I've suggested to you that this, and probably impossible, for any other developer to meet the criteria that I've suggested to you on this project that we need. One, we have a particular hardship and as corollary to that, I would add that we have sort of an equitable claim to the utility fee abatement by virtue of the previous agreement relating to this property. Two, we don't really have a very significant impact on the utility system per se. And then three, we are bringing a valuable benefit to the city of Lebanon, both in terms of the higher tax value, but also a toehold in a market that we don't have served right now. So with that, I would respectfully request that you approve our.
You're going to be running utilities through, as I remember from the presentation, that there's going to be utilities that are going to be, or sewer, you're going to run through Auburn Meadows, is that correct?
Up to you. Yes, sir.
And have you made, has there been agreements with them made yet for reimbursement for any of that? Because aren't they, won't they, won't they be using? Have you gotten that, any agreements with them to?
So we, we don't have an agreement with them currently. We are willing to pay for the, that's roughly about $214,000 for that off-site sanitary sewer easement, or sewer line without the laterals. They have suggested that if we pay them $200,000 that they will install it for us. Our corporate is not going to go for that because we need, we need to be in control of the development and the timing ourselves instead of having them being in control. And honestly, their 18-year track record in developing that isn't going to impress our corporate offices. But that said, it's $200,000 from me either way and they don't plan to allocate or share any of it with us.
Okay, so is there any? I mean, I just feel like they need to be paying you back somehow to, some sort of reimbursement of some sort.
That once we get through this process, I can sit down with Mr. Krollick and discuss what we can do. I don't mind, I mean, all I do because the whole project's kind of off kilter economically right now, paying for the cost, but it's more an issue of the timing and control of it that is a problem for us.
Sure.
So, but I think our corporate office would be okay if the city were to take it over as a, as a city project and Kevin goes to Tully and says, you pay half in your laterals and you pay half and we'll call it even and the city will build it. I think our corporate office would be fine with that kind of solution. But that only gets me part of the very small way of the relief that I need for the, you know, $600,000 that were in the hole. And I'm not sure that that will be achievable either.
I appreciate this information that you provided here about the fees that were approved for Bradford Village, but my question would be to you or to, to our legal is, does that really carry through with this property? Being that this development was never platted, was it?
So it was not platted, let me suggest to you, number one, I don't know that it has to be platted because this agreement says it's contingent on us getting the release from, which we did, from Boyd Smith. That said, it was also kind of incorporated in the PUD ordinance and I recognize that we have vacated the PUD ordinance in order to achieve a less dense product and a higher quality product, but I would hope that we could get some consideration of the fact that we voluntarily gave up that benefit in the PUD ordinance to give Lebanon a better product. But the PUD ordinance was recorded in the chain of title, it also references this agreement. So I think it is binding, but in any event, I'm just suggesting it tonight as an equitable consideration that you should consider that this property was always supposed to have about $255,000 of fee credits and Lebanon Utilities should have not have been planning on that amount of fee credits from, from this project on this property. I have absolutely no intention whatsoever suing the city of Lebanon for, under this agreement. That is not going to happen. What I'm asking you to do is to consider that as a factor in your analysis and in your concern about setting precedent. Nobody else is going to be walking in with an agreement like this.
Clarify your statement about, you mentioned that you were going to build this line for $215,000. The other guy said they might build it for you, but then you threw in there that the city of Lebanon would buy it and collect money from you to.
Not buy it, no necessary.
Or build it, build it.
Right, I don't know how it's going to work on, the off-site sanitary line is an actual very small fragment of our 268, or sorry, $686,000 of cost expenses.
Well, my question is, why would the city build something that you're already going to build?
Because Tully won't build it for us on our timeline and the city wouldn't pay for it. The developers would still be paying for it. I just need a party that our corporate underwriting would trust to get it done on time.
Okay, who's Tully?
Tully is the developer of Auburn Meadows.
Oh, okay. Any additional questions from counsel?
Ben, doesn't Kelly have one or two sections to go before they get to this area?
I think they've just platted section three and section four is all that's left.
The last we talked with Mr. Tully, there is, you're correct, they've platted three sections. They are for sure, if the remaining lots will be one section or two. So there's either four or five phases to the project and they have yet to file anything on the next phase.
Any additional questions?
No, sir.
All right, Rob, can you reread the resolution for everyone, please?
Yeah, hang on a minute, just a second. I'm confused, you, you used the word $600,000 and you're in the hole and you're saying $254,903.
Yes.
So where's the other $400,000 coming from?
Hey, man.
So let me explain. So I think the number I gave in my presentation last, or last month, whenever I was here last, was that this, we are, because of the sewer challenges and constraints on this project, I think the number was about $686,000 of additional cost to us. We have asked for $403,300 of fee abatement relief from the city of Lebanon. We are going to eat the additional $200,000. Dollars of additional expense. Or we're going to, I don't know, go to our contractor and beat him up a little bit, but we're going to eat a lot of it. The $255,000 is what I'm suggesting to you was previously approved as a fee waiver in 2003 on this property. My request now for the $403 is a little bit more than that. I'm asking for $150,000 plus, my math is not so good, in addition to what was already approved in 2003. So do those numbers make more sense to you?
Yeah, but I don't understand it though. The city had only made an appointment of $254,000 and you're asking for over $400,000 for that.
I am.
For the same service.
I am because number one, at the time that Bradford Village was created, number one, your fees were lower, so the credits were lower. They're high now, so the credit kind of grows a little bit. Number two, this developer did not actually get, and I know because I represented them, did not actually get to, well, number one, they wouldn't have had the hardship every now and then because the lift station would have been built where it was supposed to be built instead of Evan Auburn Meadows on a higher part of ground. So there wouldn't have been the same expense to this project that there is to ours. And number three, this was going to be a lot more dense subdivision than what, I mean significantly less. This is, this is, this Bradford Village was supposed to be about a four point five density, which in my world is almost multifamily at this point. So we are at a, you know, nice Chadwick, morning side, Auburn Meadows kind of density and we're bringing a price point that we don't have on a subdivision-wide level anywhere in the city of Lebanon currently. So yes, am I asking for more than was approved in 2003? I am, but it's now 2022 and not 2003. So I am asking for more, your fees are higher, our costs are higher because of decisions that have been made since this was approved.
Also, I mentioned the cost of construction, I'm sure is significantly higher today than 2003 as well. Any additional questions for Mr. Gerard, Mrs. Gerard? Okay, I'm going to have Rob read it and then I'm going to open back up for public comment again, so I just want Rob to refresh her.
Can I ask another question?
From Melissa?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Melissa, is your most expense with the sanitary or the water?
It's, it's the sanitary. The water isn't so much of a concern, but it's my only tool to get relief and help with the cost.
Okay.
If you understand.
Okay.
Although Auburn Meadows was supposed to get, I mean Bradford Village was supposed to get a significant number on the water side too.
Rob, if you could read that reminder, please?
Thank you, Mayor, council, Resolution 2022-07 is a resolution approving the petition for waiver of utility fees for Four Star relating to the Angelie Gardens development. The city owns, operates, maintains and municipal water and sewer utility. This council has adopted ordinances establishing rates and charges for the use and service of the utility. It is the responsibility of this council to maintain the fiscal integrity of the finances of the city by maintaining appropriate fees for services performed by the city. Pursuant to Indiana Code, this council may enact ordinances and resolutions for the effective governance of the city. This council adopted ordinance 2017-03 authorizing this council to waive partially or wholly tapping fees generally due to the utility as a means to foster economic development. Four Star USA Real Estate Group has filed its petition for waiver of utility fees pursuant to ordinance 2017-03 on February 25th, 2000, that's referenced in Exhibit A. Proposed Angelie Gardens development meets the general regulations set forth in that ordinance. Four Star paid its non-refundable filing fee. Four Star submitted the required utility impact study that was set forth as Exhibit B and Four Star's petition for a tapping fee waiver in an amount not to exceed $403,300. Therefore, this council approves the petition from Four Star. This council approves an abatement of water and sewer availability fees in amount not to exceed $403,300. And this council instructs the cities, authorized representatives and attorneys to take all steps necessary to consummate the transactions contemplated herein.
Thank you, Rob. Now that the resolution's been read, are there any additional public comment at this time?
I've mentioned, and, but one thing, before I turn it over to Ryan, the one thing I want to mention is that we didn't hear any arguments for why we're waiving water, other than they're having a financial hardship. And our water utility is really a separate company from the sewer utility, which is separate from the electric, so it doesn't really, utility to waive that fee. When that fee is waived, that means we don't get the money, and additional capital projects won't be funded from that, and it'll eventually affect consumer rates, so.
Ed, would you get the money if it wasn't developed?
We'd get the money from a future development that we...
Better say, based on the site design?
...touting additional sections. And once Auburn Meadows is built, it's going to be easier to connect what comes next. They're really trying to hop over some additional space. So, I think that in the future, it could be more developable once there's more build out. But let me let Ryan address that.
Okay.
In the water department, water treatment, but in order for us to stay ahead with future growth, that, because in our master plan and our CIP for water and wastewater, we do have this whole area potentially to be developed. So, we have included that in if we need to expand the water plant. We use that in the factor of our new storage tank on the south end of Longley, as where we chose 2 million gallons. That, you know, it didn't make it all 2 million, but that is factored in, and that, so, no, we wouldn't have that money, but we also wouldn't have the added capacity and usage in our water plant and wastewater, wastewater stream. It is two separate budgets, so not everybody that has a water mill has a sewer bill, and so it's kind of difficult when we're, if there is a sewer issue, if that's what the council decides, then, you know, we're fine with that, but there is no water issue. There's, the water's available today, if needed, if they needed to hook up today. So, that would be my, one of my concerns, is that water would be considered and impacted, and there are no water challenges with that site. And I do apologize for missing the last meeting. I did have a couple comments, but if...
You're fine, good.
If that's okay. We do have some downstream issues, and the council was, and the city was wonderful in helping us out with Reese Park Phase One, but there is a Phase Two that is about a $2 million project that is specifically for this area to be developed. This area will flow to the Chadwick Lift Station, and then will flow to the Reese Park Lift Station. There are some issues in the Brendanwood area that we have sanitary sewer overflows currently. We're going to expand that, and we're going to oversize those lines in order to carry that water to the Reese Park Lift Station. And part of that expansion and part of that oversizing is that money, to come up with that $2 million for Phase Two, would be a utility, part of our utility budget. So, part of that money could potentially be used in the availability fees for Phase Two of Reese Park. And we did note in our plan review with the developer, that there were downstream issues, and their phasing could be affected by the Reese Park Lift Station Phase One and Two. So, we wanted to let them know that that was, we need to have some downstream issues then. I did not comment on the financial impact report that we received, because there is, I just professionally is not within my wheelhouse, especially with the city stuff on there. There was just no, I've got no experience in that, so we did not comment. We had just met with... And also, we do believe, and we have John Lightner from Butler Freeman, sorry for engineering, to speak on the engineering aspect of it, that the lift station is in a manageable, correct spot. Bob Wables was here for 11 years after that was put in, and no changes were made, no recommendations in the budget for upgrades or to move that lift station were made. And when we did our comment letters and we met with the developers, we, you know, that depth has not changed. None of that sewer issue has changed. So, it is a challenge, but, you know, a lot of sites have challenges. So, I can take any questions if there's on the engineering side. John can hopefully answer any questions you might have, and that's all. I do appreciate everyone's time, especially since I was gone last time.
Ryan, if Bradford Village and Auburn Meadows, or even this development and Auburn Meadows, had started at the same time, right, and they're both being built out at the same time, would the lift station be where it is today?
John might be able to answer that. I know that the original, and real quick, I'm so sorry, I did forget. When we met, and there are options for recruitment agreements in Indiana Code, and we did suggest that, that if that's something we would need to help with for the developments for Auburn Meadows and for Angel Lee Gardens, there are recruitment agreements that we're allowed to do, and, you know, council could always help with that. But there are some options between Auburn Meadows and Angel Lee Gardens as far as recruitment, if they build that line out, and to get some payback on that line, to address what you were asking earlier.
To address your question, Mayor, from looking at it, it's really hard to speculate what happened in 2006 when this was constructed, but where the lift station is now does serve the surrounding area by gravity as it should. So, the Angel Lee Gardens project, the fact that it can be served all the way to the southeast corner, or southwest corner, actually, by gravity shows that the depth was planned for that area. There's some other, you know, I think we've had Liberty Village is coming online, going through plan review just to the east. It's, you know, the lift station is a better location for that development. So, again, it's hard to speculate if you were doing it again, where exactly would you put it, where it is put as an appropriate spot for the area to serve the entire area.
Okay.
John, if it was all one development in all that area, you could make that better decision, right?
Correct. And where it is, is in the middle of that area.
And it's all, like, I'll say pods because you got different people developing different
Correct.
acres, and it makes a difference.
Yeah. And as was alluded to, I mean, if Auburn Meadows, Section Four was built tomorrow, they would have an easier time because the sewer would already be there. So, it's...
Mike, you have a question?
Some of it's timing.
I got another question.
Hold on, Mike, you have a question first. Good, Mike.
Ryan, you made mention that, you made a comment of, people who have water, some don't have sewer. What do you mean by that?
So, we have some water customers, especially on the 24-inch water main, let's say, Trophy Club, that we don't have sewer all the way out there. So, they have a water bill, but they don't have a sewer bill. So, if the water rates were to go up due to, you know, a sewer issue, that, you know, I just don't feel like that would be fair to the water customer because they aren't hooked to the sewer. So, they would be impacted by a sewer challenge when the water doesn't have any challenges, speaking for this property here. So, just certainly, there's some customers that just have water bills.
That's got to be a rare thing, though, doesn't it?
Yeah, it is. Yeah. Oh, yeah. It's not a very high percentage at all.
Okay.
But I was just using that as an example of how there's, that's why they're, just, electrics, the same way. You know, some people are on Boon RMC but do have city water and city sewer.
Okay.
So, it's just why I was just pointing out that it is a different budget and how the impact is.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Dick, sir. Dick, go ahead.
Melissa, what is the, what do you think the build out is going to be on your development?
Can I answer all of them?
That's, yeah, if you want to do it at the end, that's fine. Is there more questions for the utilities essentially at this time?
Well, I want to go back and forth here, Melissa, to the utility, back to the utilities a minute. So, I wanted to get an idea of what her build out is.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm going to answer the things that I've heard so far, right now. So, I do have personal knowledge of where the lift station was going to be because I was there. I showed you the documents last time that showed that it was supposed to be on the Bradford Village side. There was supposed to be a gravity main connecting it all along the new John Marant Road extension. That would have served the new Liberty Village. They would have had a convenient, as convenient a connection point as they do with the lift station being up there on higher ground. The lift station in its current location really is a disadvantage for the property further south. It has created a hardship being up there because it is requiring that property to buck grade the entire time. Liberty Village may not have had to buck grade, but they wouldn't have had to if it flowed south either. And there would have been a gravity main there for them to connect to instead of directly to a lift station. The downstream issues that they're addressing, were here before our project, they'll be here after our project. We are contributing, if at all, very minimally to those. They are not caused by our project, and any impact we have is very small in the scheme of things. They have grant money to pay for the first phase. They can apply for grant money for the second phase. I think, and if I could leave you with one thought, this is my question. You need to ask when they get back up here and answer whatever I have to say. The question they need to answer is, are they willing to put money on guaranteeing that another developer will step in and close this year, and that he will develop within three years, which is our time horizon that you requested. We're going to build, well, actually, no, I think actually, right now, our plan is for bulk tape? We got the, yeah, bulk tape. We're going to sell all these to D.R. Horton in one bulk tape when we finish constructing them, and they're going to, they're going to build them all in probably three years, maybe less. So, I would say there isn't exactly a track record in Auburn Meadows and the original development up north for that kind of velocity. But if they cannot stand up here and give you a rock-solid guarantee that another developer's going to step into our shoes and close this year, and you, we have to walk away from this deal because of economics, the city of Lebanon is losing money. Bottom line, you are losing money. Now, Ryan may not be losing money out of his budget, but the city as a whole is losing money. And that is a point that when we sat down and talked with Ed and Ryan and let them know that we were doing this, a point that Ryan made to me is, you know, I'm not necessarily a fan of this coming out of my budget, but we understand how you all have a broader purview. And they both indicated that they wouldn't have a problem and thought that there was some merit to doing a tax abatement for this project. I, you don't have a mechanism for me to ask for tax abatement, or I would be. This is the only mechanism that I have to ask for some abatement. And I can see that the water challenges are not as great as the sewer challenges, but that's the vehicle that I'm asking for to help with this subdivision is the abatement of the water and the sewer. The recruitment agreement does not help us very much, if at all. The offsite, the only thing that I can recover on a recruitment agreement is that small section of sanitary line that goes through Auburn Meadows, for which Mr. Tully has already told me he's going to charge me $214,000 or $200,000 for the privilege of waiting for him to build it. He is not going to pay recruitment fees when I'm paying him to build it for me. And right now, that's my only option. But in addition to that, it doesn't help with the rest of the grave problems on the sanitary on our site. It does not help with the massive amount of dirt moving that we are going to have to do on our site. Recruitment agreements don't help with any of those costs. They just help for the offsite sanitary line, and that assumes I can build it, which right now, Mr. Tully's telling me he's going to make me pay him to build it for me, and he won't do it on our timeline. But there's no way I'm going to get recruitment agreement from him on a line that he's forcing us to pay for him to build it himself. So, that's kind of, if you have any other questions or if they want to respond, happy to answer.
Melissa, you're thinking two years total build out, or three years?
It'll take us a year to build the site, but then there are probably three years on the line.
Three years.
Maybe less than that. I mean, you're going about 70 a year, 50 a year?
Two.
Two to three years?
Two to three years.
My question to Ryan and John would be, in two to three years, what, do you have anything at this present time in that area? Okay. Now, I know Chadwick is a problem. Chadwick's been a problem forever, and it probably will continue to be a problem, okay? But do you have anything in that area, okay, that in this, that you would be needing any of these funds in three years, and we're only talking $400,000, to make any improvements that would affect this development?
Reese Park Phase Two is the next thing that's needed. Without, I mean, the comment that I just heard, that while there's 109 houses going in, and that might be minimal in the grand scheme of the whole system, adding another 109 houses upstream where sanitary sewer overflows are, which are raw sewage on the ground when it rains, that adds to the problem. So, that needs to be fixed before I think anybody feels comfortable saying, yeah, let's put a bunch of, let's put any more houses upstream of an SSO issue. It's not a good idea.
That goes for Liberty as well.
Correct. And we've made the same comments to them. We are actively working on the plan, Reese Park Phase One. We just had a recon this morning, actually. So, things are in motion. We need the lift station online as Phase One before we can build Phase Two. I believe Ryan has Phase Two in his budget for next year. So, we're looking to get this done and get this timing corrected.
So, John, though, the Reese Park Lift Station, it really wasn't even talked about until we got this American Rescue Plan money, right? It really, I didn't feel like it was on the utilities radar. So, we've, I mean, we continue to let houses being built in Auburn Meadows, right, when this is all a problem, right? I mean...
That's what was done previously. It doesn't mean it was the right thing to do necessarily.
Well, my other comment would be, John, and Ryan, would be, all right, I'm not going to collect this fee upfront, okay? But if they build this thing out in two years, let's say, okay, they're going to be selling homes in the first few years. They start selling homes, and all of a sudden, you got customers on that are paying, paying the line, paying already, you know? And they're going to be paying utility bills already. And by the time you get a year or two, and those homes have first started, they've already paid their recruitment fee, and I would bet $100, nothing's happened to make improvements in the first three years.
I would say that, as Ryan was trying to explain, the rates and charges aren't really where you build capital projects unless you...
No, I understand. I understand. I understand.
So, that, that's kind of where...
I, I...
The availability fees are there to help.
I understand what they're for, John.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Any additional questions from council?
No.
Any general discussion from council? Okay. This time then, I would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2022-07.
Make a motion. We approve Resolution 2022-07.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. We'll have a roll call vote on then, on this. Madam Clerk, that's all right?
Sure. Mike Kincaid?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Who?
Dick Robertson?
Do you want us to come back to you?
Do what?
Do you want us to come back to you?
Yeah, come back.
John Copeland?
Yes.
Brent Wheat is absent, so there we have that. Sierra Messenger?
No.
And we, normally, we have the president go last, so do you want Dick to...
Actually, let's have Morris go. That's fine.
Morris?
Yes.
Here it is, Dick.
I don't like this ordinance. I'm going to vote yes.
Resolution passes 4 to 2. Thank you for all the testimony. Appreciate it. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, utilities. All right, that concludes what I have for old business. Is there anything from council? New business? Ed, you were going to give an update on House Bill 1002, please?
Yes, you're seeing a lot lately, I guess. House Bill 1002 was passed to repeal the receipt tax. receipt tax. Part of the reason for seeing me today so quickly is that they passed it in March, and they want us to do, pass a resolution with the service board and then have, have it before city council, before May 1st, so that we can lower the customers' bills by about 1.4%. So I just, we've put some briefing papers in your packet. I just want to see if anyone had any questions on it. It's a good thing for the ratepayers. More or less, they want to lower our rates by the same percentage they're lowering the receipt tax, so that, that gets passed on to the customers. The problem for us is that they want to implement it by May 1st for, for the IURC and July 1st for non-IURC utilities. We're just trying to get it done. So with that, is there any questions?
What's, what's the name of the tax?
It's the, the receipt tax.
So if you notice on your utility, yeah, if you notice on your utility, you essentially have a sales tax on your, on water and, water and wastewater, is that right?
Yeah, water, wastewater and electric.
Water, wastewater and electric. So essentially the state house repealed that tax on that. So those are now tax free. So essentially, because the way we structure the rates, we structure that, that, that tax into our rates currently. So by the state house repealing that tax, we essentially need to, well, it'll be coming for us later with the utility board. We'll move on at first, but there'll be a negative rate reduction for the utility customers, essentially.
So the tax is coming off, right?
Yeah, the tax is coming off, and we're lowering our rates by the same amount of the tax. So it gets passed on to the ratepayers.
Oh. So negative utility, rate change. So something I think we probably all get behind, correct?
Yeah.
Yep. So the utility board is, is adopting this in your May meetings, is that right? Or you're, you're...
We're, we're meeting this Thursday, and we're going to have a resolution. Baker Tilly is still preparing some numbers for us, and should be ready by then. We're pushing the clock on it to try and make their timeline.
Because this has to be done by May. So essentially, the council, we're giving you a heads up here that on our April, our next April meeting, we'll have to do essentially adopt the rate reduction at our next meeting to make sure we hit the deadline for the IURC, correct? Fair to say?
Yes, exactly right.
Okay. Any other questions for Ed on that?
No.
Okay. So heads up on that for council. Thank you, Ed. Next up, John, Lebanon Utility Service Board Department?
I would like to make a motion that we reappoint Neil Taylor to the Lebanon Utility Board.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second to Keith. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? Okay. Congratulations or condolences, Neil, if you're watching. Next up, food and beverage requests from the Fourth of July Committee. John Messenger?
Good evening. John Messenger with the Fourth of July Committee. I am here to request a $30,000 request for fireworks for the Fourth of July. Just so you know, we are not going to have a carnival this year. Hopefully, we can get it in the future. But that was quite a bit of the money that we had for our fireworks. The council has helped the Fourth of July Committee out the last two years to put on a nice Fourth of July fireworks display. And without the carnival being here, we won't have any revenue coming in. We do have some from the four banks that we have. Those take care of our entertainment that we have and, and to run the parade. As you all know, Fourth of July is the biggest deal that we have going on in the city. It's a week-long celebration of our independence, and nothing to top it off better than the fireworks. And I could use the help of the council with the Fourth of July fireworks, which is $30,000. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you have for me.
Any questions for John?
John, could you tell the people out there what it costs a minute to do a firework?
A thousand dollars a minute is what it costs. And actually, those prices have gone up pretty steadily. And now because of somebody in China that is trying to hold up their port, they're, they've actually, it used to be $4,000 to $5,000 to get the container out of China. It's like $90,000, kind of hold them at ransom. But prices are going up. So for the $30,000, you get about 22 minutes. So it's actually more than $1,000. I found that information out today, in fact. Yes. So, and studies have shown that for, after 22 minutes, you kind of lose interest, if, if that makes sense. That's from the fireworks people. But it would be $30,000 would run roughly in 2022 and 25 minutes is what it would cost. And that's for the right height that we get. We can go higher, but it'd cost more money. We try and make sure that the fireworks can be seen within the mile around the middle school. And I think that's, we could go higher, but it'd cost a lot more money. A lot of communities held their, their fourth, or their fourth committees or whatever for their fireworks. But if that helps you, does that help you, Mr. Copeland?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah. Just, higher the better.
Yeah. It's just a shame. The carnival is the big news, though. They, we've had it since 84. And yes, they've, COVID hit a lot of carnivals and things like that, and they've moved on. So they were pretty heartbroken, too. They've been here since 84, but it is what it is. And yeah, just requesting $30,000. There again, the banks help out a lot, but that's with the entertainment and the Fourth of July and the parade.
But we've had a carnival since the 60s, haven't we?
Yes, we have.
Yeah.
It wasn't always Poor Jack's. Poor Jack's was Longwood, but a lot of carnivals closed out due to COVID.
Yeah.
Helped and just went bankrupt. So...
Okay.
And we're reaching out hopefully next year. We can find someone, but unfortunately, not this year.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion then.
Make a motion. We approve the request for $30,000 for the fireworks.
From the?
To be paid.
To be paid from the food and beverage account.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? That is approved. John, please make sure you pass on that, that fireworks show was sponsored by the...
Yes, we are. We're actually looking into design right now to sign to make sure that it is, your names are all on there.
Perfect. Thank you, John.
The food and beverage logo.
Food and beverage logo. You got it.
Perfect. Thank you, John. All right. Next up, Resolution 2022-09. This is additional appropriation from the local income tax. Chief Batts?
Okay, good. Good evening, everyone. This is an additional appropriation request to offset the cost of the purchase of a skid steer. We had the opportunity to purchase a skid steer through the Parks Department. This was a trade-in value of a skid steer that they were turning in. The value of the skid steer was deemed to be considerably higher north of $40,000. So we had...
Trade the skid steer in for credit, but we heard a need from the fire department saying that they buy it from the Parks Department to... Okay.
To be able to move props, to set up cars for training, to move plywood around in two by fours as we build and add to the tower. Just general maintenance out there. We're able to use it when we're, we're adding on or we're doing welding on the tower. It's just, it's used quite a bit. And it'll also be available for the Parks Department as well, you know, with the expansion of the Big Four Trail or any needs they have. You know, we're, we're going to use this together as a team.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Tony, you mind reading the resolution for us, please?
Sure. Resolution 2022-09, the resolution of common counsel of the city of Lebanon for an additional... Corporation is the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain fiscal integrity at times when it becomes necessary to... Authorized under Indiana code, whereas it has been determined it is now necessary to appropriate more money than it was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require public hearing of which council has served proper notice. Be it resolved and adopted by the council of the city of Lebanon, Resolution 2022-09 to appropriate funds for the purchase of a skid steer from the Park Department. The following additional sum will be from Fund 2240, which has lit fire, public safety through the fire department for $24,325.
Thank you, Tony. Okay. This time then, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2022-09. If you can help a comment, please step forward. State your name for the record. Seeing no sudden movements, I will now close the public hearing on Resolution 2022-09. Any additional comments, discussion from council?
No, sir.
We'll entertain a motion then.
Make a motion. We approve Resolution 2022-09.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second from Sierra. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? That is approved. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And council. And last but not least, Resolution 2022-10, council, common council to accept transfer of certain real estate from the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission. Ben, I'll have you present this.
Yeah, there's actually two resolutions. One we had in last second. The first one is to accept property from the redevelopment commission, and the second will be to turn around then and transfer that property to the Lebanon CDC. So this is the 11 or so acres of the old Holiday Inn site. That's kind of the keystone piece of property for the development of the Field House project, as, as we're calling it. And so this, this was part of the proposal this entire time, was that we would convey the property to them for the development of the site. So in terms of the, the legal process to do that, it needs to be in the CDC's hands so that they can convey it to the developer. The redevelopment commission currently owns it, and so the process would be for the redevelopment commission to convey it to the city, then the city to convey it to the CDC, then the CDC to convey it to the developer. So what we're asking for here tonight in two separate resolutions is, one, to accept, accept the conveyance of the property from the RDC to the city council, which is the first resolution. The second one will be then to approve the, the conveyance of the property from the city to the Lebanon CDC, that will then facilitate the, the conveyance to the developer. So that's, that's the quick and dirty of it. Be happy answering questions if there are any.
Any questions for Ben? I know there's a lot happening there with this. Again, this is, because lately we can't transfer from the RDC to the CDC, correct?
Right, yeah. The state, state statute won't allow the RDC to transfer directly to the CDC. So we have to do this intermediary step to give it, to transfer to the city, and then the city transfer to the CDC. We're just taking acceptance and transfer of both of them tonight.
Any questions from Ben on that? Okay. Rob, you mind reading the resolution, please?
Thanks, Mayor. Council, and also to clarify, prior, or earlier this evening, the RDC passed its resolution conveying it, this property. So this is, again, that second step. So Resolution 2022-10 is a resolution accepting the transfer of certain real estate from the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission. The Act authorizes the commission to grant its interest in real property to the city for public purposes on any terms that may be agreed upon pursuant to Indiana law. The commission owns the real property that's more commonly known as 505 South State Road 39, and that's set forth in Exhibit A. The commission desires to transfer all of its interest in the real estate to the city for the city's public purposes, and the city desires to accept the transfer of the property. Therefore, the city hereby accepts the conveyance of the real estate from the commission. The city hereby authorize the commission to execute and deliver any contract agreement certificate or other document, including the form of the quitclaim deed that was or is attached as Exhibit B, and to take any other action as such person determines to be necessary or appropriate upon advice of council to accomplish the city's acceptance of the real estate.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Now the resolution has been read. Is there any public comment on this? Any discussion from council?
No, sir.
I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We accept Resolution Number 2022-10.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Sorry.
We'll say it's Sierra on that one. Motion, a second to approve. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? That is approved. All right. After owning it for a whole 15 seconds, Rob, can you read the Resolution 2022-11, please?
Yes. Resolution 2022-11 is transferring the certain real estate to the Lebanon Community Development Corporation. Whereas this council has accepted the transfer of the real property that's described in Exhibit A from the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission. It's anticipated that an economic development project consisting of an indoor sports complex will be constructed on the real estate. In order to facilitate the construction of the project and to promote economic development within the city, the city desires to transfer the real estate to the Lebanon Community Development Corporation. Therefore, the city hereby agrees to transfer the real estate to the Community Development Corporation for nominal consideration to facilitate the construction of the project and promote economic development within the city. Upon adoption of this resolution and the acceptance of the conveyance of the real estate by the Community Development Corporation, the mayor and the clerk treasurer are hereby authorized to execute and deliver any contract agreement, certificate, or other instrument, including the form of the quitclaim deed that's attached heretofore as Exhibit B, and to take any other action as such person determines to be necessary or appropriate upon the advice of council to accomplish the city's transfer of the real estate to the Community Development Corporation. And this resolution shall be in full force and effect after its adoption. And then I would just like to add, Catherine Pinellas here from our office, if anyone has any questions as well for her, so.
Thank you, Rob. Any public comment concerning the resolution now? Any discussion from council?
No, sir.
Okay. This time then, I would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2022-11.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept and pass Resolution 2022-11.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Sierra. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? That resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, council. All right, that concludes what I have for new business. Is there anything from council?
I got, I got one thing.
Yep.
I'd like to see us repeal that ordinance, 2017-3, that allows us to do that waiver.
I think it's...
I just, I just think we don't need that. We don't need to go through this.
In my, in my discussions before with council, if you can remember back to 2017, right, in 2015, we had two new housing permits in, in the entire year of that, of the city. So I think there was a time and place for it, and I think, you know, that site was, you know, had been within the city for a long time and had unique challenges. And so I think that was a consideration the council made with that. But I would agree that, you know, maybe we have decided that, that's maybe not as relevant today now that we've started to see a lot of more interest and focus on Lebanon. And we can start working on that immediately if that's the will of council. We start bringing that forward to you guys.
So do we have to, do you have to...
It'd be a...
Some resolution to repeal that?
Ordinance to repeal it.
Ordinance to repeal it?
Yeah.
Can we have that for our next meeting?
We can get that, start working on that. Yep.
Thank you.
I have something.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
Okay. As the July 4th festivities in Lebanon is the biggest thing, the second biggest thing is the Lebanon Quanis Pancake Supper, which is this Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock. Tickets are $8 at the door. All the funds go to serve the children of Lebanon. See you there.
Thank you, Mike. Last plug for a while, right?
Yeah.
Any additional discussion, comments from council? Okay. We would entertain a motion concerning the claims.
Make a motion. We pay the claims.
We have a motion to pay the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? Claims are approved, and would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion. We adjourn.
Motion adjourned. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Sierra wants to leave. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? We are adjourned. Our next city council meeting will be Monday, April 25th, at 7:15 p.m. Have a great night.